Consent agenda looked to be just the agenda from the last meeting. I don't know if I can hear a motion to accept that.
So much.
In the minutes from last meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
A second.
A second.
Anybody want to have any more discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Opposed? Okay, the visitors' comments? I don't know if anybody wanted to speak tonight? Hey, Robin?
Robin?
Okay, Jen, if you can bring them in, that would be great.
Okay, go ahead, Robin.
Okay. Um, I know that federal funding is pending and it is up in the air. But what I wanted to make a comment about and put a bug in your ear and a thought in your head is our priority needs to be on educating the kids, not on catching them up. With that in mind, should there have to be cuts? Please consider not cutting positions that are directly tied to students in the classroom. Granby over the years has been devastated by the cuts and we are coming out of that hole. And like I said, I understand that federal funding for towns in crisis is held up and not coming through and you have no idea of what it will be. But I just want you to keep that in mind is we do need to educate the kids and not catch them up. And cutting anything pertaining to classroom would benefit the children and the town. Done.
Thank you. Who else wanted to speak?
I've got a couple more here. Stephanie Parent.
I don't know if she stepped away.
Oh, no, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
We can, yep.
All right, awesome. So just first, thank you all. Everyone's, you know, doing a great job. I just want to reiterate the teachers. I mean, I cannot say enough amazing things. You know, my daughter's kindergarten teacher in third grade, they have been absolutely amazing throughout this really chaotic teaching time. With that being said, I'm just curious if we're going to talk at all. I had emailed admin before about this. I continue to check out Dessie's guidelines that are being let out. And I just keep seeing that they want to be prioritizing peer and teacher engagement. And I'm just curious how with our learning plan, how we're connecting peer engagement? I know it's really tricky with elementary level, but I wasn't sure if we were going to get more into that. And also just about the meeting on the 21st, it kind of bothered me. I had heard that there was a policy that non-residents could not speak during school committee meetings. I tried to find that policy. The town clerk tried to help me out. I talked to two select board members and no one could see it. So if that is, I just want to bring that up and just say that I think anyone whose children are in our schools, whether they're residents or school choice, should absolutely have the opportunity to speak about their children's education, especially as we've mentioned so many times that we get a lot of school choice families in elementary that stay all the way through high school. So limiting their parents to speak out just kind of irks me the wrong way. So I just wanted to look into if that's a policy. Is there room to change that so that everyone has an opportunity to speak out? And, you know, give comments or suggestions regarding their children's education in Granby? And that is all I have.
So Stephanie, I'm just gonna jump in here. We made a mistake. We made a mistake last week and she should have been allowed to make the comment. We had, I'm gonna say, a breakdown in communication of understanding of that. We researched it on our end. We knew at the end that that was a problem. And I was trying to catch back up with her, but she got upset and jumped off the call before we even had a chance to rectify it before the end of the meeting. So it was not done intentionally. It was a mistake. And, you know, I just, I, I thought I had reached out to people to let her know that. And, you know, we will try to be better with that. But you do need to announce who you are and everything. So in this world, we're all working together, you know? And so I apologize for that. We tried to rectify that before the end of the meeting, but she hopped off the call. So we can't, you know, I, I can't do anything other than apologize for a mistake that was made.
Absolutely. I don't think there was any malicious intent there. I just wanted to make sure that if that was a thing, that we addressed it for the future issues, not even about last meeting, just in general. So thank you for clarifying.
The only thing I want to jump in here and say is, while I agree that she should have been able to speak had she been on time, but I don't think she was on time. I think we were past that point in the meeting and I think that was one of the other issues.
Yeah, but I mean, at this point, Mike, though, we have to, I think, take into account if people are having trouble logging into what's a meeting. You know, if she had walked in 20 minutes late to an in-person meeting, that's a different story. But she was a few minutes late and she had, was having trouble entering the password and then had to wait, had to be let into the meeting. You know, I think at some point we have to, and I saw that she was on there. And just, you know, but she, by the time she came on, we were just finishing up with visitor comments. So, you know, I think we kind of have to let bygones be bygones. It was a mistake and we'll try to be better going forward with, as long as we Zoom, are doing Zoom, Zoom meetings. I don't know.
I think, I think, I think we need to be careful. And I don't want to slide the whole meeting into a sideways thing, but I think we just need to be careful that we're not always going back to visitor comment. There's got to be an end at some point. And if you're a few minutes late, you had issues, okay, I can buy that. But if it's like a half hour late, I'm sorry, we, we have other business we have to do also. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. But I, I do agree, maybe, maybe a little bit more leeway in the Zoom environment.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
No problem. Um, let me see, I think we got a couple more. Oh, I've got, it says from Kim and JR. I'm not sure. It says, "I would like to speak," so I'm not sure which of them or if it's both. So I'm gonna go with Kim first and we'll see. You're on mute, maybe?
Oh. Can you hear me?
We can now, yep.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if my video had to be on or what. Sorry. Kim Goldsmith, 239 Taylor Street, Granby. I more or less wanted to talk about the new Wellness Wednesday policy that just went into effect this week. I know a lot of other schools are doing something similar. I know that it's generally on Fridays, not on Wednesdays. I did reach out to Mr. Latoy and both of my children's teachers. Personally, this is going to be really difficult for my children. So we're not going to do Wellness Wednesday. We're going to continue educating on Wednesdays the best we can. I'm hoping, my daughter's teacher said she would already help out with that. And I'm, I'm reaching my son's teacher late today, so I haven't heard from her about it for tomorrow. But I just feel my kids are just getting into the swing of things. And I know a lot of stuff like this has been discussed in other towns with their school committee. And I don't think school committee has been involved in anything as far as Wellness Wednesday or, or any other programming changes that are taking place. And my biggest concern, like I said, is my kids are just getting into the swing of things. My son wakes up every morning and does his schoolwork on his own. He is in second grade with Ms. McMahon. And I feel that throwing them off in the middle of the week is just going to be a really big challenge for not only me as a parent, I work at the end of the week, but also for the kids. So I don't know if there's going to be any talk about this with school committee. Like I said, like a three-day weekend, I would have no complaints at all. But I feel like doing two school days, Monday and Tuesday, and then taking a break from academics and a normal routine on Wednesday, and then starting again on Thursday and Friday is going to be really difficult. And I also feel that if my kids were in school right now, that I wouldn't be able to pull them out on a Wednesday for, say, you know, a horse show or something like that. I mean, my kids would have to go to school Monday through Friday. And I know this is, you know, difficult times. But I feel like taking away an academic day, especially on a Wednesday in the middle of the week, is going to be very hard for a lot of families. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Um, do we want to just make a last announcement? So if there's anybody else that wants to do visitor comment, if you could either send a message through chat right now or pop on, pop off of mute and announce yourself? We'll give you one minute.
Do we have any music to play while we're waiting?
All I can hear is the Jeopardy theme in my head. Oh, hold on, we got a chat, I think. Nope, okay. About 30 more seconds, I think, and then we'll move beyond. Alex, can you see if anyone else is trying to come into the meeting just so we can avoid the same situation as last time?
Not that JR wants to speak, but he is trying to get into the meeting. And somehow either he's not getting let in by Alex or something because he's on his cell phone.
Okay, Alex, I don't know if you can hear us. If you can just check that real quick and we'll give another minute. Sorry, everybody, I just feel like I'm overly sensitive to it. All right, I guess we're, I don't have any more chats. Or requests. So I think we are probably okay to go.
Right, so thank you. Next line is for Marcus. I don't know if he has a report for us, but I do see him on, there he is.
Hello, I do have stuff today. After the last meeting, I put together a questionnaire for the students to fill out about how they're feeling during the at-home learning. And so I put together, let me start screen sharing. Is it working?
I can see it.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So I put together this slideshow that showcases the results. So we had a total of 147 students respond to the poll and they were asked what they were in. So as you can see, the colors correlate to a grade and then the pie chart. And just shout out if you want to ask a question or anything. So we asked, "How would you describe the work assigned to you during the remote learning experience?" And you can see the results there. And on all the questions, I put "other" as an option. So that they could, if they had any other thoughts on the question, they could respond however they want. So all these little things on the side of this one are the other, what people. Most of them are some variations of the class. It depends on the class or depends on the week. But there was also a lot in balance workload that they'll get a lot one week and not so much the other week. But we'll get, we can come back to that later because it comes up again.
Marcus, this is Emre. Anything between just right and too much? Are those, are those dropdown or are these things that students entered on their own?
This side is all the things that they entered on their own. And then this little strip here is too little.
Okay, thank you.
And all of them are just one. How is the difficulty of the work assigned? Again, all these are just the other. And most of them are again, some variation of depends on the class or depends on the day. It's sometimes harder than other days or weeks.
Marcus?
Yep.
Another question. Are you able to, not to us right now, but if you wanted to, are you able to see among those, for instance, who say just right or too hard, what grades they belong to?
Um, I can see who, like, I can see who said everything, but I would have to go through and connect them.
Okay. Thank you.
Have teachers been accessible to you during the time of, during the time of the learning experience? Teacher assistance, how have the teachers been helpful? So off of this question, we then branched to other questions. If they answered yes, we made another one where they could write out how they have been helpful. And if they said no or somewhat, they could write out how the teachers have, could have been more helpful to them. So this one is how they've been helpful. They've been flexible. They answer quickly, are understanding to the situation. They communicate well, are offering help. They're open to Zoom and calling kids and are always open to email. And they're informing students what to expect for the week. That's been a big thing that I've seen is that students are really appreciating when teachers put out all of their work at the beginning of the week so that they can decide when they want to do it throughout the week and just to plan what they're going to do each day. This one is how the teachers could have been more helpful. Not explanation to or provide examples or how to find the information. No or late responses to questions that they send. Let students know when they're available. More video calling, easier material and taking it slower with new material. Lessening the work or assign quicker assignments throughout the week. Post work in the morning because sometimes the teachers don't post until the afternoon. And then again, post all the work for the week on Monday so that the kids can put it into their schedule. All right, and last slide. For this one, we asked how they've been feeling or any other like comments or concerns. So there was a lot of stress, sad and missing school, bored, overwhelmed. They like in-person school better, but others said that it is just as good as in-school. Uneven workloads was a big one, lots of those. Confusion or just like an uneasy, weird feeling about the situation while others are feeling great and feeling fine. They, a lot of people liked working at their own pace and putting it into their own schedule of how they wanted to do it. It was hard to adjust to the new situation. And the one question that I found was, "Will voting still take place for student government positions?" I don't know if anyone has the answer or not. So that was the result of my student question that I made. I would like to thank Ms. Jordan for helping me a lot. And she really helped me get us all together and make sure it was perfect for the kids, getting it out to them as well. I don't know if she's here to make the move.
Marcus, this is, this is a great, great job. I mean, and I'm not just saying that. This is the great information for us. I'm really happy that you, you went and did this. This is very informative, kind of information that we've been hoping that we would get from our student reps. And thank you for that. Much appreciated. And thank you, Ms. Jordan, apparently, for her help as well. Thank you.
I can send this to you guys.
That would be great. That would be great. Yep.
Yeah, I would agree because there's a couple pieces in there that I, I'd like to see if we can get into a little bit more. So yeah, if I had that, it would help me, you know, frame my questions better.
Excellent job, Marcus. Excellent.
Thank you.
Was that everything you wanted to bring to us tonight?
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. So yeah, thanks again and, you know, great, great job. If, if you can get that out to us, I would appreciate it because there's parts of that information that I thought was, would be very useful to, to, to plan strategically a little bit more about, you know, the rest of the year.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, then the next item is under new business. It's a cost comparison for the transportation.
Um, yep. Did everyone have a chance to look at the comparison that I put in the folder? I think I did it last week. I just want to make sure everyone had a chance to look at it. And if there's any questions first before I go through it or I don't need to go through it. If there's no questions, everyone understands it. I can kind of lead up to you guys on how you want me to move forward with this.
I have two questions. One is going back to earlier conversations. Did we, where, where did we land in terms of paying for this year's service or no service?
So actually Cheryl had talked to Chris last week and he agreed to let us negotiate paying a percentage of our first student regular day transportation contract and our Vanpool special education contract. So for Vanpool, we have agreed in principle, we haven't had anything in writing yet, but we're going to pay for 78% of the remainder of the year. And with Vanpool is they promise, which again, they're going to put in writing, is if they get any of the government funding, the cares money, any money associated to the pandemic, they will then credit us whatever that amount would come out to be in next year's contract. So again, we just came to that agreement last week. They are in the process of putting some stuff into writing for us. Obviously, we'll send that to our attorneys first and then present it to each of the school committees because it's us, Ware and Belcher Town. That's all on one joint contract for first student. Vanpool is, is separate, but for, for first student. So for first student, we agreed to pay 42% of the remainder of the contract. And same thing, they're putting stuff in writing. We'll get it to our attorneys and then it'll be presented to the school committee so they can vote, approve, not approve, and we can move forward with, with paying them.
Do you know what the other, do you know what the other districts are doing?
Now, what other district? Ware and Belcher Town?
Across the state, what's the common practice?
Oh, so there, unfortunately, there is no common practice. I know for Springfield, for instance, they are not paying their transportation vendor at all the rest of the year, their first student. So, and we agreed to pay percentage. And there's a bunch of other districts that have agreed to pay percentages that are, that are bearing. We each have our own contact person for first student in the region for the state. So again, it's anywhere from people not paying their transportation vendors to yes, they've agreed to a certain percentage and they will be paying them for their services for the rest of the year.
I have a question.
Just one more question, Mike.
Okay.
So now bringing to the comparison that you shared with us. It looks like the assumptions changed fairly dramatically from the number of trips to per trip cost and all that. Do we know what assumption they were going with? How did they reach those underlying assumptions to be able to come up with the numbers? Because from the previous contract to this one, I'm just speaking from memory, but I think it was $509,000 or so for the previous contract per year. Now it's $641,000 or so. About $16,000 of that is understood. We instituted the late bus, so that's fine. But do we know what is driving that, that increase contract over contract?
So a couple of things. One, just the bid specs alone were, so the specs that we put out for the bid, the regular transportation, nothing changed there. The late bus, so in the previous contract, we just paid for the late bus as needed. For this contract, for the bid specs, we put the late bus in there. And then the real difference came in the athletic field trips and summer trips section where the number of trips increased, the number of miles per year increased, and then the driver waiting costs and number of hours increased. And that's just the bid specs that were put out there. So again, these aren't hard numbers. We true up to these numbers as we get close to the end of the year. It's based on athletics, how many field trips we do throughout the year. So there's, there's a couple of variables in there. But for the sake of the bid specs, the cost of the contract does look dramatically more than the previous one. And also, the rate, the, the regular day rate went from 361.68 to 420. Now that regular day rate from 17 to 20 stayed the same. There was no increase in the three-year contract. So it makes sense now that we're in a new contract that they would increase their, their rates. So I just want that, I wanted to be clear. These are the rates that will stay the same for the next three years of that contract. But again, Emre, to your point, a lot of the increases were, were strictly on what were the bid specs that we went out for bid. And these numbers are for the most part placeholders. And we true up at the end of the year to, you know, the actual trips that we've taken, how many days we use the late bus. We definitely don't use the late bus for 100 days, but we put that in the bits back.
And, and if we find ourselves in a situation where we do not use their services, you know, at the levels that they anticipated or they use as underlying assumptions? You said we true up, so it can go down if we don't.
It would go down and then, and then essentially, this is a separate town article. So the money would be reverted back to the town if there was any, any savings on the contract each year.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep, you're welcome.
So I guess my, my questions now are, I know you, you just said that we put specs out there for 100 days for the late bus. How many, how many days would we, have we used a late bus this past year?
Stephen and Bill would be able to answer that. And I'm not, I, I know we've, I've talked to this with them. I want to say it's half of that. Maybe 40 or 50, and that might even be on the high side. So we're, we're right now nowhere close to 100 days of late bus use.
Okay. And then the same thing with the athletics. I see the spec there at 40 days, we have it at 100. That's probably driving a big chunk of that, that, that variance is that extra 60 days, right?
Yep.
How many times in the last couple of years have we averaged using that?
So I want to say for athletics alone, not including playoffs, I want to say we're over 100 trips a year for all athletics. About an average. So that number might not be enough. But, but again, it all depends on if we have cancellations. I mean, it, it, that number, again, it's just a, it's a placeholder essentially. And it certainly is an increase. Now, I don't know where the 40 trips per year came in the last contract. That seems significantly low. But that's, that's what was in the contract. So the 100 trips per year is, is certainly more accurate. We might be over, we might be under, just, you know, we don't know until we get close to the end of the year.
So is it safe to say then that we true up on the last few years? We actually had to pay them more because we had more trips for, for the athletics. Is that, is that like a safe thing to say?
Um, I, I, I don't want to make that some. Um, I I I don't want to make that assumption. I'm I'm not sure. I it could be. I don't I don't know that off the top of my head. Um. I don't know. I can certainly I can certainly um find that out for you, Mike.
Yeah, I would have, yeah, I would like this because I just want to try to figure out if if this ninety five thousand from fifty four thousand is actually really close to what we're paying anyways, just with a true up. And now it's just.
It's 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 not. So I will say that it is significantly higher and we're usually around, at least for athletics alone, we're usually around, I would say about that fifty fifty five thousand dollar mark for um athletics.
So I just need to understand that more because now it just doesn't make any sense to me that.
So so these are the specs that went out to the transportation and these are, this is what um was returned to us. Again, most of these trips per year are for athletics. We could be over a hundred some years, we can be under a hundred. But again, for right now where we are, it's a it's a placeholder. And as we go throughout the year, we will reconcile and true up to these numbers.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to ask was not not knowing what school looks like next year, what happens if we don't have a hundred and eighty days?
Yeah. So again, so it's certainly, uh, it's a good question. It's a question that we've been asking, um, but we're just not there yet to know the answer. I feel like there's there's so many unknowns for the remainder of this year to even speculate on next year at this point would just be um it would just be kind of wasting time at this point. So we're not, we're certainly not at that point yet. But the question has has the question's been asked.
Yeah, I just I just I'm asking because it it feels really wrong to pay them, you know, even a percentage for something we didn't get on top of looking at a significant increase for next year. So.
Yeah. So um, so yes, so they're not providing us a service. So technically, I guess we shouldn't be paying them. But after um Cheryl's conversations with Chris and the way he essentially interpreted the contract is we're not necessarily paying for their actual service, but we're paying for the right for them to provide a service when we need it. So if you look at it that way, I I think paying them a percentage of the contract, even though they're technically not providing us busing every day. But if school, we know now at this point that it's not going to come back. But if school was to come back at some point this year, we would be paying to have those buses ready for us when it when school came back. Obviously, that's not the case, but the way Chris interpreted it, and I can I can certainly see that, um, is that we're paying for the right to have their those buses ready for us whenever we need them. Eighty days out of the year.
I have a question. Mike, go ahead after I ask after you're done.
Well, I I just I just want to say that was fair. Um, I just to me, it just feels like I don't want to be in the same situation next year if the state decides they're going to do something different in September and maybe into next year with with school and we don't need the buses for a hundred and eighty days. That's that's kind of my thought.
Yeah, again, um, totally agree. And again, it's a great question. We're just not, you know, we're still trying to figure out, you know, there's districts statewide that haven't even determined what they're going to do with transportation for the rest of this year. Um, so I I just don't think it'd be right to speculate for next year on how we're going to handle that.
Okay, just.
So my question is, in years past, we have the bus contract for a hundred and eighty days or a hundred and eighty five, including snow days or whatever, but we have you know, we do two snow days, we're covered under blizzard bags. Do we, is there an adjustment for that? Like, what is our precedent for? Or is it just a flat fee that we pay? Or if we're not going to school for some of that, or we had days that were closed for, you know, burst water pipes or heat closures or whatever? Is it always the hundred and eighty days or a hundred and eighty five days? Or is it adjusted? Like, is there a precedent? Do you know what I'm trying to ask? Does anyone know what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
So prior to Adam, oh, go ahead, Adam.
No, go ahead, because I was going to defer to you about the blizzard bag. Oh, but what I was gonna say is is again, we got to think of it as it's a hundred and eighty days or a hundred and eighty five days, but it's not necessarily them providing us with a bus on each of those days. It's them providing us a bus for the year. That's what we're paying for is their their overall service and not a day by day service, even though that's how it's broken down in the contract.
So when blizzard bags were implemented, um, when TMS was still in the business office, uh, we applied to have the five days reduced off of the transportation bill. Um, we went back and forth on that and eventually we did lose because it is a contractual obligation to pay uh for the length and the entirety of the contract. And it isn't a per day. It is a hundred and eighty days. Um, if it was a hundred and if it was a per day contract, then we would have leverage uh to reduce uh what we pay. But we pay for a hundred and eighty days. That's how the contract is written. Uh, and that was the conversation with Chris, um, you know, three, two years ago. Um, and we went back around with Chris just this past week to confirm that.
Adam, I have a question about the field trips.
Sure.
I understand athletic trips and stuff, but now I'm thinking now if a particular grade, fourth grade decides they want to go for a field trip, they go up to Old Deerfield up in Deerfield. Does that mean they don't pay for that bus?
No, we pay for it.
But who pays?
Yes.
We used to have to have to the separate, the school would have to pay for that bus service, charge the kids to pay the bus. So now that that doesn't happen anymore. First student provides that bus to take them on a field trip to Old Deerfield for no charge?
I have a comment. I know the PTO in the past has paid for field trips for the buses.
So are we paying for the buses? Is it paid by the town for those field trips or is it paid separately by the students in the school?
Nope. So the way that the contract and the bid specs are broken out is there, just just like on this breakout, there's regular transportation, there's late bus, and then there's athletic field, summer trips, any other trips that's not associated with a with the regular transportation, with a hundred and eighty days with the transportation. In our case, in that third section, most of that cost is for athletic trips. Now, what I need, we all got to remember is that we're on this contract with two other districts. So these bid specs, although they might not fit our needs, they might fit Ware and probably do fit Ware and Belcher Town. So um, just keep that in mind that that these costs are are kind of based on all three of the needs of our districts. I'm going to go out on a pretty strong limb and say it's not going to cost us anywhere near six hundred and forty one thousand dollars for transportation this year. But based on the bid specs that went out for all three districts to to accommodate all three districts, these are the numbers that came back.
Okay.
I I again, I all the questions are great. I don't I don't want to get hung up on each and every number because I want us to remember that we're in it with two other districts and these numbers accommodate all three of our districts and not just us.
Yeah, makes sense.
Just so that I can understand, the first section is based on a hundred and eighty days. The second section is what we require for late bus. And the third section to me feels like it's when we need it.
Essentially, yeah. So yeah. So and and again, the third section for us is a majority of it is athletics. And and on athletics, just to break that down, so we get charged for athletics. Um, we get charged a per bus.
Go ahead. I shut the camera off.
We get charged a mileage rate, which is which is the round trip from where the bus leaves the garage in Belcher Town, picks up our kids at Granby, takes them to the athletic event and all the way back to that garage in Granby. So that's one charge for that trip. Then there's the mileage charge for that trip. And then there's the driver waiting cost for that trip. So a baseball game will say it takes two and a half hours. We're paying that driver two and a half hours at forty five dollars and seventy five cents to sit there with that bus while there's a two and a half hour baseball game being played. And that's where, so again, that's where a lot of the cost is, the variable cost is in that third section. A majority of it is athletics. But but again, I'm just going to reiterate it. It's us with two other districts. These numbers accommodate all three of those districts and we are not going to spend anywhere close to six hundred and forty one thousand dollars for transportation.
And take your word for it, though, you said, right? You're going out on a limb, but.
No, don't take my word for it. It's a pretty strong limb, I feel like.
Alright.
It's a branch.
Anybody have any other things they want to ask? Because I I have one more thing I want to I want to ask and I I don't you don't get the chance to ask their question. The only other thing I wanted to ask was um what else do you need the school committee to do with this year's budget? Or I'm sorry, this year's cost if Chris is, I mean, if that comes off of Chris anyways and he's the one who interprets that. Is that now is this just a hideous or is or is there something more that we have to do?
No. So we're we're going to have to, once we get the language back and our attorney um okay's it, we will have to vote on amending the contract. I'm not sure if it's going to be an MOA or just an addendum, however that legal stuff goes, but we will have to vote on amending um the final year of the contract.
Okay.
And again, I we got Chris involved for a couple of reasons. Um, one, obviously for his interpretation of the contract. But two, I didn't want to go through all of these negotiations, all the legal stuff, have you guys vote on it? And then it got to the town and he wouldn't pay the bill because according to Mass General Law, we don't have to pay for services that aren't rendered. Um, so I just wanted to, I brought him in the loop just to make sure everybody was on the same page. Him and Cheryl talked last week. He's okay. So now we will move forward with getting it all official and then I'll present that um once we have it back.
Okay.
That's the right way of doing it, Adam. Thank you for engaging him.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So moving on to the next item, it's refunds. That's a great subject, refunds, but for spring user fees, so.
I'm not, uh, if Ally's on, yeah, there she is. Okay.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I'm under David's name. Um, I'm hiding here. So I just had it all loaded. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, it's good to see everybody's faces.
Good to see you too.
Thanks. Thanks, Emery. So I'll try to knock these two out together. Um, obviously, you know, with the extended school closure for the remainder of the year, the MIAA on April twenty fourth made an announcement. It wasn't quite on the same day that Governor Baker made his, which we were all kind of waiting for whatever they were going to say. Um, I thought they had something up their sleeve, which they didn't, um, unfortunately. So we need to refund our athletes. Um, I'm going to give you some ballpark figures, but I think you have the exact ones. About seventy of the athletes were registered for spring sports. Um, there was probably another forty or so that hadn't registered yet, which made my life a little bit easier. So we refunded them the full amount. Um, in full transparency, we did did refund them the three point nine five percent as well. And you need, I'm bringing it to your attention because, Emery, you had asked about that three point nine five percent when we um signed on with Family ID and My School Bucks. So we did, um, Mr. Sullivan and I chatted and Adam chatted about it. We did reach out to My School Bucks and they are refunding the school. Um, I believe about five hundred and fifty, six hundred dollars of that three point five nine percent fee. So we're not losing anything here. Um, they understood completely and they were pretty awesome about it. So I believe those payments were set to go out, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, this week, I believe, on this warrant.
Yes, they went out. Uh, the check should be going out this week.
Okay. And those refunds range in prices and amounts anywhere from seventy five for some of the esports kids um to a hundred and fifty. Some families had three kids. Um, we have several families in the district, surprisingly, that have three children. Signed up, so they're looking at a few hundred dollars. So those are beings, those are all sent to the business office and ready to go. So I is more of just like information sharing because I know, Jen, I think you had asked about it maybe two school committee meetings ago, um, but we didn't make a move on it. Um, and I did communicate with all the registered athletes, just letting them know I'm not going to do anything until we know for sure. So I just wanted to share that info with you. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you for doing that. And thank you for uh looking for that three uh three plus percentage that we're paying as well. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I I don't have a question. I just have a comment and I wanted to say thank you for doing the uh Mass Live senior thing for Julia Gobin for the hundredth hit. That was really awesome. And it was posted the other day and I just uh wanted to say thank you for doing that because my niece is on the softball team too. And I just, it was nice to see to for those kids to get recognized. So sort of an aside, but thanks.
Yeah, no problem. It was fun. It was nine o'clock in the morning and I rolled in honking as loud as I possibly could. But her parents had emailed me. Um, I just wanted to make sure she was recognized. But we're trying to do one senior a day and TikTok is my new my new, I can't even explain it. I'll just leave it at that. So we're trying to recognize one senior athlete every day um and posting that on Twitter. Um, I haven't done mine yet today, but I will as soon as I get off this meeting. So the next piece was the coaching stipends. And I know that the MIAA had polled all the districts in the state. I thought a lot of it was, I mean, it's good information to have, you know, to look at, but I paid particular attention to the PVIAC. That's the organization and the league that we belong to out here. And majority of the schools are paying a portion of the coaching stipend. Um, so we are looking at fifteen percent. We, Adam and I worked together and Mr. Sullivan um wanted to look at what was fair. And showed good faith too. I think if we settled on a ten percent, I think that was a little low, especially for some of our first year coaches. But their stipend amounts range from eighteen seventy nine to thirty seven hundred. So we went back and forth and tried to compare to some surrounding districts and we landed on fifteen percent. And sent that um to the business office and hoped to pay them for their services. They attended preseason meetings. They have been working on scheduling. They work in the off season for me too, um, with either uniform orders or equipment orders, picking up orders. So there's some of the reasons why.
And I just want to real quick chime in is that um this is another one of those things that is different throughout the state. There are some districts not paying their spring coaches at all. Some districts paying their spring coaches the full salary. Some districts paying their spring coaches a percentage. Um, so like Ally said, her, myself and Steve kind of did some rough calculations on how much work we assumed they had put in prior to the season starting and and we agreed that fifteen percent was a a pretty fair um amount to uh pay them for the for their efforts um to at least get the season up and going.
Yeah, it came down to, Adam, I think, what, three or four weeks or something? Um, I think that's what it equivalency was. And surprisingly, there's there's a good number of districts not paying them. Um, it didn't settle well with me. Um, we have great coaches. And they need to be, you know, they deserve to get paid for the work that they've done. So I don't know if I hit the vote box. I don't think it needs a vote. I think it was just information sharing. Or maybe I'm wrong.
I don't know. We we count on you. You you selected the box to go with.
Okay, so maybe I'm just telling you or asking you, please?
Adam, Adam, do you need to vote for this?
It didn't say vote, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's more of um, it's more of an FYI. Um, there's no vote needed. It's just more of an FYI. So no, there there's no vote. There's no vote needed.
Okay.
So so was this shared with them yet?
No, nope. I mean, I've been in contact with my coaches weekly. Um, but no, um, I think the last message I sent to them that I was working on something, but as of last week, I mean, it was the twenty fourth that they made the announcement. So I started working on that and the refunds the very next day. So I just wanted, um, so they know very little. They haven't, they don't know the full amount. They don't know any, like, they don't know how much they're getting. They do know that I was working on something.
Okay, I mean, that's fair. I just I just thought I'd ask if they already knew about it.
Yeah, no, if they're watching, they do know.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Thanks for doing that. I I think it's fair.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, thanks for doing that. I think it's fair, especially for the work that they've done already. I think it's fair to, you know, to pay them for it. So thank you for looking into it and thank you for proposing.
Okay. Night, everyone.
Night.
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 Thanks, Ally.
So the, so the next item on the agenda is rather large and vague and probably spend quite a bit of time talking about a few different subjects. But basically, the impact of the COVID-19 to education families, I'm sorry, the facilities and next year's budget. I figured this, this would be a nice line item to have for the foreseeable future because there's gonna be a lot to talk about as things roll out of DESI and roll out of the governor's office and with, you know, the other various state offices that impact what we do. For tonight, though, I did wanna talk quickly about the impact on next year's budget because there's been a lot of stuff going on with the town. I don't know if people watched the select board meeting last night. Cheryl's been working with Chris on a lot of items over the last week or two. They've been having a lot of discussions and, you know, feel free to jump in and, you know, add some, some detail around it. But apparently, they're not gonna really be looking to do a budget for the next town meeting. Looks like they want to go with the 1/12 for pretty close to 90 days. I mean, that's the latest, as I understand from them. They really want a spending plan, working up towards a budget, the spending plan for the next 90 days. They're getting some pretty scary feedback from the state that makes them really nervous about trying to put anything into any real plan for next year. Then the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, I don't know if everybody gets the emails from the MASC. The one came out yesterday or the day before about what the Boston Public Schools did to vote to the, they did a resolution to the Fed about making sure they increase, they, they, they increase aid to all schools. I was going to introduce that here to see if we would wanna add on to that. But as I read through it, it was very specific to Boston, so it looks like if we want to do something like that, we'd have to reword parts of it that make it more centric to Granby. They, they talked about the number of meals they served. They talked about the number of students, the number of teachers. So we'd have to change those numbers around. I don't, I don't know how to go about doing our own resolution. I don't know if we can just endorse what they've done in some way, saying it applies to us too. But I do, I do think that as a school committee, that that's something that we should try to do a little bit more of is advocating for the district, for the kids, you know, on things like this. And I just saw that coming, like, I thought it was perfect. So I'll step back and let Cheryl.
Yeah. I might make a recommendation for the CES representative to reach out and perhaps do a joint resolution from the districts in Western Mass and CES. We're very similar in a lot of ways and would probably have a better starting point, so to speak, for Granby to springboard from and make any changes from there. But I think it's a really great opportunity for the CES collaborative folks to get together and talk that through. Jen?
Yeah. We have a meeting at the end of this year. Could you just send me an email? I'm gonna start looking on what's required. And then when I have the meeting at the end of the month, I'll ask them.
Yep. I'm actually seeing the superintendent's tomorrow, so I'll bring it up to Bill Deal to maybe put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you're gonna go the CES route, maybe if you just want to send Bill something on the side so that he's ready for it and may even have something written up.
Well, I want to research also just to see what it is, so that I understand what I'm talking about.
Okay. So I'll send the email out to everybody on the committee. So I don't know if you're on, you know, on that distribution list from MASC, but I'll, I'll flip that out to everybody on the committee.
Okay.
So just to go back to potential impacts, I did put this in your folder. I guess I will read it just so that people know what we're doing currently. So we did shift to remote learning immediately since March 15th. And we have closed the buildings also. We did open the buildings or plan to open the buildings to allow teachers to pick up instructional materials only that they'll need for the rest of the year. And that is protected under educators being able to go back into school buildings under the governor's declaration. We will plan to have families return to the buildings. Of course, in safe ways to pick up their students' belongings if they're still in their classrooms, so we are planning on that. We did, of course, do a course correction with the DESI Remote Learning Guidance that came out last week, which shifted us from going deeper into the standards and actually moving forward in standards that would most likely have children prepared for the next school year. We've been working really hard to acknowledge that everyone is trying to balance remote learning and professional expectations with having children simultaneously participating in remote learning in their homes. The majority of our educators, 75% of our educators, have children in schools. And so we recognize that their days are different and their childcare needs are different. And so we are allowing that asynchronous learning environment for them as well as how they interact with their students. We've been working on the development of professional development for paraprofessionals and for teachers. We continue to encourage teachers and pairs to participate in CES offerings that are still going on. And CES has a long history of doing blended online learning for teachers and paraprofessionals. I want to say thank you again to David and Stacy for their work in upgrading the network infrastructure and firewall applications to allow for student use of Chrome devices off the school network. That's really important. That was a plan that we had to implement over the summer. In about six weeks, we were gonna, for six weeks, David and Stacy did that in three days. So we were able to disassemble all of our Chromebook carts at the elementary school and then send those individual Chromebooks home. I think it's important to keep note of that because our FEMA MEMA funds that are going to be released from the federal government are asking for a list of expenses that we have encountered because of COVID-19. Certainly, this is on the list and we're hoping to get reimbursed for this. So if people, you know, we're trying to keep a list, a running list, if people think of something that, you know, for instance, we're gonna talk a little bit about digital signature software, you know, things like that, that we've had to consider implementing, I believe we'll be able to get reimbursed for. Let's see, we have reallocated. We've moved to remote access meeting for school committee. Thank you, everybody. You're doing an amazing job. We are gonna create a digital signature capacity for central office. We've already done that, but also now for school committee. We do recognize, as Marcus was talking about tonight, that there is an increase in students reporting stress, anxiety and depression. That's not unique to Granby. It's reported throughout the Commonwealth. And so, you know, speaking specifically to why I think school districts are looking to wellness kinds of days for students. What we want people to understand is that this is a, this is an academic day for students. It just happens to be in their exploratory and in the wellness part of our program. So it falls under health and our exploratory courses. But our wellness program is also taught in our academic classes as well. And so really, we're trying to make sure that students are engaging in all of their coursework because in addition to students reporting stress, anxiety and depression, one of the things we're noticing is students are foregoing the assignments from their exploratory teachers. And so we wanted to put extra emphasis on those courses for students who find that coursework particularly rewarding, but also to give kids a chance to have space during their week to make sure that they were engaging with exploratory courses. It's not a day off. I'm actually quite upset that anybody would even assume that it's a day off. It is a day of school. We just happen to be focused on specials, as they're known, and our wellness program. Our academic teachers, as we're gonna talk about in a little bit, they are going to need time to co-plan for future shutdown. Right now, we are doing, I think, an excellent job managing the curriculum in a remote learning environment. But we need to be able to flip the switch at any point next year. So that means a lot of our content needs to be made digital and we need to align the resources that we currently have to our curriculum maps so that if we do have to flip a switch, we immediately can have children stay home and engage in a remote learning environment. And so teachers are gonna be using Wellness Wednesdays to have that collaborative time to develop those resources for the remainder of this year and next year. Let's see, we have, as Adam mentioned, been negotiating transportation payment for the remainder of FY '20. We have been, and this is important, I've mentioned this with Chris, we have been monitoring school lunch deficit with Chartwell's. They are gathering information for us. As you can imagine, we're very concerned about the amount that that deficit will be because we are not serving the numbers of lunches. So we're hoping Chartwell's will have a report for us soon, but we do have our eye on that. We are prioritizing facilities and custodial work for a while. The recommendation is that the custodians were just sanitizing classrooms post-COVID-19. Then we got guidance that custodians and facilities folks are essential employees and with proper masks can continue the work of the buildings. So we've shifted now from sanitizing the buildings into actually moving into some of our summer work. So we've been generating the summer work list and getting custodians into that workload. Just so everybody knows, we have paused negotiations with all units until we can return to face-to-face meetings. And we are working under a municipal spending freeze. We do have a couple of outstanding large items that we do need to work with the town on. One of them is the asbestos abatement in Room 210. And we are working with the municipal side to make sure that that happens in a timely manner. We just have to get them the information for that. So any questions on what we're doing right now? Going once? Going twice? Okay.
You're doing a lot. You're doing a lot.
It is a lot. I think, you know, I want, I don't want anyone to lose sight, and I don't think we are, but to lose sight of the hard work that's been going on by everyone in the district. I think it's important that we understand we're all, we all have a piece to play. And when they're, when they're done well together, the system runs as smoothly as it possibly can, even when we're in the middle of a crisis like this. So thank you to everyone, including parents in the community and the town. You know, we're working really well together right now. All right, on to next year. So as I said, one of the things that we are anticipating with COVID-19 is the potential that we may have to shift to remote learning on a moment's notice. So we're preparing teachers and paraprofessionals for that. We're also anticipating changes in how we return to school. And a lot of that is gonna be based on Board of Health requirements and those might be local in addition to being from the Commonwealth, in addition to being from the federal government. So some of the things that we're hearing about and keep in the back of our mind are screening staff and students for illness, creating smaller class sizes to meet social distancing requirements, limiting large group assemblies in schools, sanitizing facilities regularly, using blended learning environments. Additional school health service resources are most likely gonna be needed. And one of the articles I was reading today also mentioned different types of scheduling of buildings, perhaps split schedules or, you know, three days on, three days off with half the students coming in for three days and then the other half coming in for three days. So no one really knows, but it is something that we have to consider and make some attempts at projecting. So our teachers will certainly need resources and training to continue synchronous learning and/or to create digital instructional learning opportunities for the entire curriculum map. Right now, we're focused on this April through the end of the school year, but we're gonna have to circle back and have this remote and digital learning experience all throughout the school year. That's a real heavy lift and our teachers are gonna need time to collaborate on that. One of the things we're considering as we move into how to open next year is that we are gonna see an increased need for intervention. One of the good news coming out of the federal government right now is our CARE Act funding. That looks to be about 80% of Title I, which would run Granby about 61,000. So that is something that we could use to perhaps add an interventionist because we do know that we're gonna, we're gonna have a need there with students who have a learning gap based on being out of school and in a remote learning environment. We may be looking at an increased need of time on learning. So looking at our schedules and understanding if students are going to need more tutorial time, extended learning time days even, that's gonna be, have to be resourced and thought about. Again, we're gonna have to look at how we group students, whether or not we can continue to group students the way we do or even if we do multi-grade students, particularly at the elementary school because of their level of learning, would that be more impactful? So all of that we need to consider as we move into the next school year. We also, I think, need to be cognizant that we may need to remediate the curriculum maps if students have fallen behind, if a majority of students have fallen behind. Teachers, let's say in fourth grade, are gonna have to know and understand the third grade standards for March through the end of the year because they indeed may face the possibility of having to actually teach those standards when kids come to them in the fall. So all of that we're talking about as a leadership team and we're gonna put a plan together for staff to consider that. One of the things we're noticing is teachers requesting the increased use of digital licenses for textbooks. So that's an increased cost that we're hoping to put onto the MEMA FEMA grant. And actually, that's a great request that teachers are looking at those digital licenses for their students now. We do know that we need additional student devices to ensure that all students have access to remote learning. This year, when students went home, many parents felt that they had the connectivity and the devices that they needed. But as this extended, they found out that, you know, two computers in the house for five users was not gonna work. So they came back and were happy to give them devices. But really, we need to shift to a one-to-one environment. And we were probably three quarters of the way there for our students. So the last 25% we'll have to focus on. We are anticipating changes in transportation requirements and costs. Whether or not we can transport all students at the same time on the same bus like we have, I think, is a question we need to consider, which of course could potentially double the cost of transportation for us. We still need to upgrade, upgrade the network capacity and firewall for remote learning. One of the things that we're very concerned about are resources to improve our ability to support disengaged students. We do have a handful of students who are not engaging in the, in the online environment. And we need more ways to reach out and engage them in that environment. So whether it's continuing through work-study or community service projects, we need to. we need to figure that out if we return to a full-time remote learning. And with regard to working with the town and end-of-year expenditures and FY21 budget, I know Mike shared a little bit about that. Right now, the projections from the state to the municipal side, as Mike mentioned, are concerning. For the school side, unless there is a change to Chapter 70 or net school spending, we, I think we're in a good position between MEMA funding, Title I, the CARES Act coming, that we would be able to help the municipal side weather this a little bit. We also have, you know, as you know, our revolving accounts that could help us weather, which is important and why we've been asking in our strategic plan and is a goal, that we have a year in arrears for exactly this kind of situation. But Chris will get back to me this week with changes in the parameters to the school department. And then we will work forward for that 90-day spending plan and get that to you so that you can see it and give feedback, and then we can send it forward to, to Chris. So that's all I have. Any questions on that part?
That was a lot. Lot to take in. I did, I did want to, I forgot to mention two things before you jumped in. One is, I believe they're, they're now looking to have a three-committee meeting. So I think, I think one of the things we need to do is figure out a, a date and time that works for all three committees. So I don't know if that sits with me or if that sits with where, where, where that sits, but I can, but I can take that offline with you, Cheryl, to figure out.
Yeah, I think, very quickly, if you send Chris the request and you know the dates that the committee is available, I think he will share it with the correct board members. Or actually, we'll take it offline because I think we can just send out the invitation. Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to say was, it came to my attention that I was mistaken when I said that John was opposed to the 305 last year. So I didn't want to go on record saying that that was, that was a mistake on my part. I do, I do recall that there was not a unanimous vote on their side on it, and I believe I just jumped to an assumption there. But in the end, I did go back and watch the town meeting last year, and it was, John was actually very, very much, you know, he was happy with the way things went last year and the year before, I believe. So I did want to point that out. Did anybody have anything they wanted to ask? I know Cheryl just went through a lot of information, a lot more than I thought we were going to hear tonight. I, I do think though, unless somebody disagrees, I do think it, it stands to keep this line item on the agenda for the foreseeable future, but maybe not with just, you know, little add-ons to what's, you know, happened since the last meeting. Because I do, I do think in talking to Cheryl that the information flips around an awful lot quickly. So it's hard to stay, stay on track with everything. So I think it just, it stands to reason to leave this as a line item on our agenda.
I agree. I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering, Cheryl, if you've gotten any thoughts yet, what Board of, Grammy Board of Health is thinking for some of these things? Are you just having beginning conversations with this coming out? Are you getting any kinds of guidelines yet?
No kinds of guidelines yet. I think they're still in a wait-and-see, you know, because we are closed for the remainder of the year and things are changing so rapidly.
Right.
What we know is that we're going to be working together.
Okay. And I didn't see on here, but I'm assuming it would be part of it is how we will do lunch with like the scheduling because they probably can't all sit together at lunch.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot that I've been thinking about, like how you even get them on a school bus, right? If you have to do the, you know, distancing, you can't, you can't, I mean, that's going to have to get addressed or looked at. So, yeah, a lot of these things, I think they're just starting to understand the things that they need to think about. And I think that's what we're asking to be kept, you know, up to date with. It's just the things that you're, you're, you're trying to think through now as a plan.
I think, you know, having, having run through sort of the list right now, it's probably be helpful to put it into some categories. And so if people had a specific question and they wanted to shoot me an email, you know, throughout the week before the school committee, I could make sure that we target that, you know, during this part of the discussion. Because you're right, this is, this is going to be the work now, you know, for the next probably six to eight months will be knee-deep in this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, I would.
And it'll be changing.
Mike, I would think we'd want to try to have this meeting with the powers-to-be prior to our next meeting, right?
I, I would believe so, but I can't, I, I don't want to predict their schedule.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, the sooner we can start getting information. But I, but, but, but again, I was watching the select board meeting last night. It seems like they're just, they're in a spot now where they're starting to figure out some things, but there's still a lot that they don't know just yet. So that's probably a big reason as to why they haven't been that responsive to getting back to us about a joint meeting. It's just they don't have anything to offer at this point, so.
Right, there's a lot of unknowns still at this point, yeah, a lot of unknowns.
Yeah.
And so we've moved town meeting again, right? What about elections? So are you guys sticking with us then for foreseeable future? I hope.
I was told by Jay that we stay until the next election, so.
Whenever that might be.
I think it's June 22nd or so.
Right now, yeah, and I reached out, yeah, I reached out to the town clerk this morning because I just wanted to confirm that she wasn't expecting stuff for the campaign finance. But yeah, that's definitely, in her response back, she's definitely still looking at June 22nd. All right. The next item is a voting item for the signing of warrants electronically. So I don't know if we have something to look at or if we're just going to vote that we're going to do it.
Yep. So in your folder is the electronic signature of warrants. You voted, I think almost two years ago now, the policy regarding municipal modernization, where the quorum of the school committee and the superintendent or his or her designee will sign payrolls and warrants presented for approval. The school committee may designate any one of its members for the purpose of approving bills or payrolls under this section, provided however that the member shall make available to the board at the first meeting following such action, a record of such actions. Each school, each committee member remains responsible for compliance with the requirements of MGL 4156. So tonight, in a, you know, warrant signing in this COVID-19 is obviously problematic, trying to get everyone's signatures. So I was wondering if the school committee would consider making one person responsible under this policy and then also voting to allow that person to digitally sign the warrants as they were presented.
Makes sense to me.
I don't have a problem with that. Seems like the logical way to do it.
Yeah.
The only other option, and I get, and I don't know if it's an option that's just, it's not allowed because I didn't really get a chance to read through all this and make sure I understood all the, all the little things of it. But I know when I was with CES, there was a, a subcommittee that was developed for the signing of warrants, and it was, I believe, the chair and two other members of the, of the board would get an email and we would all digitally sign it, and it would go off back to the accounting team, and then the warrant would go out.
I thought they only had one person.
There was, there was, there was a spot for two of us because I was one of them, and then it was somebody else, and then it was always Dan, who was the chair. So I don't know if that's an option we want to take too, if it would be allowed or if people just want to do as what's said here, the chair can digitally sign it. I'm fine either way. I guess, I guess we'll go with Cheryl's vote then, since everybody's quiet.
Yep.
All right, so what do you need from us to vote on this, right?
Probably a motion, a motion to designate somebody for the purpose of approving bills or payrolls.
I'll move to designate the chair of the committee to be the signer of our warrants and also allow electronic signing of those warrants.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so as for the discussion points, I'm going to, I'm going to, I have a few questions. One is, can we, so we still need to share whatever's signed digitally by the next school committee meeting. So can we make sure that those warrants end up in at least the consent agenda piece again? Because I believe that was where we used to do it.
Adam?
Yeah, yep, that's fine.
Then I'll feel better because then we, we're now complying with that second part, where at the next meeting, it's brought to the full committee for a full vote, right? I mean, that, that kind of closes that gap. The next thing I wanted to ask was, do we have a system already picked out to do the digital signing? Or do we, do we now need to go out and find a vendor or somebody to, to work through that with us?
Yeah, so we're, we'll have to go and do some of that legwork. There's only a few reputable softwares we would probably use. I know DocuSign's one, Adobe is another, and I know David's been in talks with Adobe about
Sign it.
Other, other products from Adobe, but certainly we can, we can get prices from however many vendors we want. My thing was, at least for tonight, let's vote and approve that we can have one committee member sign it. And then, Mike, if it's all right with you, I'm usually in the office now a couple of times a week, and maybe until we get some electronic platform to do this, you could, I could leave it in central office, you could sign it, and, and we could do it that way for now unless you're not comfortable with that, with that process.
I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as everybody else is fine with it. I, I would just need to know, I mean, we can, we can catch up via email as to, or some of the ways to when we'll be there and when I, when I could get into the building to sign it. I mean, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So maybe we can, after, after it's approved and you are the designee, then you and I can work on a way for, for the short term to get them signed while we're looking for a software that will accommodate doing it electronically.
All right, so do we have to amend the, the motion now to account for the real signature? Since it specified the digital signature?
No, we, no.
Yeah, because the goal would be to get to the electronic signature, so.
Okay.
One, one, one thought though, since we are talking about this because of an emergency situation, should we, instead of boxing ourselves to a single point of dependency, say the chair or the vice chair can, one of them, but here the vice chair can sign it? So I'll amend my motion to say, uh, the, the.
Emery, just even before, I would just say maybe the chair or his designee because then maybe even if the vice chair is not available, at least there's someone that might get a point.
That's, that's even better.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, thank you for that. I'll move to have the chair of the committee or his designee to be the sole signature on the warrants and that the warrants can be, can be signed electronically.
I'll second that again, Adam, I'll second that for you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right. Then the next item is, I had to close that, hold on. It's another vote. People Director, so Cheryl?
Yep. Pupil Services Director. And unfortunately, I just lost my, my connection to the file, so forgive me while I get that up. So we are very pleased and very fortunate to have amongst us in the Granby Public Schools an internal candidate for our pupil services director, Megan Shepherd, as you see in the, in your folder, comes with an extensive background in many different communities, education communities. She has proven herself in all of these, and especially with us in Granby, to be student-centered, a passionate advocate to meet individual student needs, and a tireless problem solver in her role currently as educational team leader in the Granby Public Schools. During the interview process, everyone was unanimous and really had personal connections with Megan, I think, which put her in a very positive stead to take on the responsibilities of this position. She's developed really strong relationships with staff, with our families, and with students. And so my recommendation is to move Megan forward to you as the next pupil services director of the Granby Public Schools.
I, I always like the, for the ones that, that are already with us, as opposed to hiring out, if it's possible.
Yep.
Does anybody have any further things they want to, they want to talk about here? I think we need a vote, right?
We do, and let me just see. Megan is with us. I don't know if, if anybody wants to say hi or has any questions.
Say congratulations to her.
Yeah. That would be my heart, yeah.
I guess my question is, does Megan wants to say hi to us? Hi, Megan.
A face to a name is always good, right?
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
Where is she?
Can't find me.
I can't. Where'd you go?
She's in the middle of my screen.
Okay, got you.
Well, this is obviously, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk now or not, but I would just say, thank you for your consideration, and it would be my pleasure.
So thank you. So I, I think I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to extend an offer to Megan, what is your last name?
Shepherd.
Shepherd, okay. To Megan Shepherd as our, as the pupil services director of Granby Public Schools.
For a second.
All right, and anybody want to say anything further? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Look, it was unanimous again.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That would have been awkward if, if it wasn't unanimous, I guess.
Oh, there's been awkward, not here, but there has been awkward. All right. Congratulations, Megan.
Yeah, congratulations, thank you. Moving on to old business now, remote learning plan. Is there anything more you want to add to that based off of what you said before? Or is this just kind of a, okay, it's just a kind of like a, a spot to keep here for a while as we, as we work through some of these issues?
Yep.
And East Middle class size, right now, again, I don't, I don't have anything further to bring up on that. There's just way too much unknown, not only for the rest of this year, but, but even going into next, next year.
Well, the reality is, we might be more than three classrooms short now. We could be seven or eight or 10 classrooms short if we have classroom, class sizes of 10 or 12 kids, you know? And then it doesn't matter how we go about, you know, we might barely have enough room for preschool and kindergarten in that school.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to be the bearer of that kind of news at this point in the night.
I know, but it's just, it's like the, yeah.
I know, but it's just, the reality of it is setting in, and, you know, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, but it's frightening to see some of that stuff, you know, and you're seeing all these restrictions out in the news and different things, and I certainly don't want to get into it at 9:03 at night, but it's like, you know, we're kind of up a particular creek without a paddle.
Jen, I heard that the school committee members will be required to provide their largest room in their homes at the classroom. You may like that, I don't know.
I have a bomb.
Every day we think it's fun, we'll know more and more, you know? It's just such an unknown thing right now, is more time goes on, we'll know more direction where we're going.
Yeah.
But it'll all be clear at the end of the next school year, right?
Sure. Clear as mud.
All right, I guess we'll go into standard reports. Did you have a report for Cheryl?
Nope.
Okay. Business office or facilities report, Adam, do you have anything for us?
Nope, not tonight.
CES, did you guys meet?
No, we meet at the end of this month.
Okay, I thought so, just what I'd ask. I did want to say a couple of quick thank-yous or shout-outs, or whatever you call them nowadays. One to the teachers for the parade, and one to GCAM for the fabulous work that GCAM did with putting that film out there for everybody to see. I know it was a high point of my son's day that week, and I did see Jen out there at the corner, too, so I thought it was a very well-done thing, and I just want to say thank you. All right. And with that, I think that concludes everything we have for tonight.
When is the next meeting, scheduled meeting?
That's always a good question. Technically, right now, we would have voted for...
In case I have someplace to go.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, shouldn't tonight have been Cheryl opening the meeting so we can come up with a new committee chair?
I think it would be the next one.
The next one, this would have been our last meeting of the session.
Last.
Yeah, so we have to decide how we want to proceed through that, even though we're still the same committee. It's like, do we just leave everything the same, or do we change? That's not on the agenda, but I don't know if we want to put an item like that on the agenda.
I would wait until the elections.
We had our next meeting scheduled for May 19th, and that's the last one that we have scheduled for the year. I do have June 2nd out there, but I thought we had pulled that back in on elections, I just didn't delete it. So either way, I have the 19th and the 2nd on the calendar as the next meetings, but I just don't know where we're at with those dates, I mean, if those still work, or should we, and then we will probably be having a meeting at some point in the near future for the three committees, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's safe, what are we meeting now? Is this the 2nd and the 4th, or the 1st and the 3rd?
First and 3rd.
Do you want to just kind of hold those out right now through the foreseeable future until, one, we have the elections, two, we meet with FinCom and everybody to understand that? I don't think there's going to be any shortage of things for us to be kept up to date on as we roll through the next few months, so I don't think it would hurt, even if it's not a two- or three-hour meeting, if it's only a half hour, 45 minutes, just to get updates on things.
That's funny, half hour. Okay, so I have the dates, then, just to get them on record, so we'll have them written down, May 19th, June 2nd, and June 16th, and then potentially June 30th, but I think we're saying town meeting is the 22nd, right?
Well, I think they're going to move that again, but it was actually, the elections were the 22nd, I thought.
So should we just write down the 30th as well, then?
Do you guys think we should meet three times in June, or do we just want to stick with 2nd and...
I think it depends on when the town meeting is going to be, right? We may have things to discuss, given the sensitivity around the budget, so I would just keep in our calendars and hope that it doesn't happen, but I think we should be prepared for that extra meeting.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we don't have anything else we have to discuss on an executive session, right? Because I didn't see a Zoom on that, and I don't see it on the agenda.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Anybody want to say anything further on the subject? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.